It is 7:15. We will reconvene in open session, this regular meeting of the Waco High School Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under sections 551.071 and 551.074 of the Texas Government Code, and no action was taken. We have the Board. I want to welcome everybody here this evening. I want to remind you that if you have a cellphone or other electronic device because of the crowd, if you would silence that right now, we would appreciate it. And we remind you that everything we do tonight has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, and also would be remiss, we didn't welcome anybody watching on Channel 17 at home. With that, we'd ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, reflection, meditation, or contemplation. Thank you. We'll move on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Nelson, or Mr. De Beer?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, we're pleased to have a senior from Waco High School to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please welcome Casey Helms.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Casey. Dr. Nelson, Board members, please join me in front of the dais for tonight's special recognitions. We'll begin the special recognition portion of our meeting this evening with an introduction of our pledge leader who attends Waco High School. Casey Helms is a senior at Waco High School and says her favorite subject is aquatic science. In her spare time, she enjoys participating in JROTC and is the Waco High mascot. She also enjoys cosmetology. After high school, Casey wants to enlist in the US Army Reserves as a cook. Casey's instructor says she is a very bright and motivated cadet with a great future in the Army Reserves. Casey's mother, Trisma Helms, has joined her this evening. If you would please stand, we'd like to recognize you as well for raising such a wonderful daughter. We also want to say thank you to our adopt-a-school partner, Barnes &amp; Noble, for donating the books that our pledge leader is receiving this evening. Waco ISD and its athletics department have been blessed for more than two decades by the presence, loyalty, and dedication of Ms. Melissa Hickey. Melissa served as the secretary for the department for nearly 21 years until her recent retirement. From coordinating the athletic staff and events, to working with visiting teams and coaches, as well as volunteers, ticket takers, the media, and the community at large events at our stadium, Melissa made sure that things ran smoothly and always added a smile. As written in the Waco Tribune Herald's article following her retirement, "Athletic secretaries are the lifeblood of high school athletics," and Waco ISD couldn't agree with that sentiment more. We would like to thank you for your service to Waco ISD this evening, and I'd ask all of you to please join me in congratulating Melissa on her retirement. Waco ISD has a long tradition of success in the history fair competition, and this year is shaping up to be no different. Early in the fall, more than half a million students nationwide chose their topics and began their research on this year's theme of conflict and compromise in history. Here in Waco ISD, students researched, planned, rehearsed, and prepared their projects, readying themselves to compete at the Heart of Texas Regional History Fair held at Baylor this past month. By finishing first or second in the region, a number of students qualified to advance to the Texas History Day competition in Austin. And tonight, we're pleased to honor 13 students from Waco ISD who earned this honor and will be representing us in the Texas History Day competition on April 28th. From there, students will have the opportunity to advance to the National History Day competition, where again, we have a very long and proud tradition of success. Beginning with our state qualifiers from Cesar Chavez Middle School, please help me welcome Jaylon Alley, whose exhibit is titled "The Early Life of Ruby Bridges." From Tennyson Middle School, I'd like to recognize Lily Kaufman. Her documentary, "The Interrogation of Waco: A Story Behind the Secret," in addition to qualifying her for state, won several special awards from the Cotton Palace, the Daughters of the Republic of Texas, and the Waco Historical Society, as well as an additional recognition for the best use of primary sources. For their group performance, Cory Tin Boom, Taylor Felton, Sarah Stevens, and Anna Caroline Gibson will be heading to the state competition. Elisha Sri Ram, and Billy Henderson, and Daniel Swingke created the group website Treaty of Paris 1783. And Tennyson student Noah Marshall qualified for state in the individual performance category with his performance "The Cuban Missile Crisis." From Waco High School, Isabella Riggs is headed to state with the documentary "Love is Conflict, Love is Compromise, Love is Loving." Gloria Canaster is taking the documentary "Three-Fifths to the Thirteenth: The American Compromises Black Personhood" to state. And in the individual performance category, Harper Hoover qualified with Nadine Gordimer, "The Conflict of Apartheid and the Compromise Through Writing." And representing University High School at state, J.C. Alvera will have the individual website, "The Fight for Equality: Daisy Bates and the Little Rock Nine." We are incredibly proud of these students, and if you're a parent of one of these students, would you please stand so we can recognize you this evening? We're also proud of the remarkable support that these students receive from their social studies and research teachers. Like to introduce from Cesar Chavez Middle School, Kelly Barron, and from Tennyson Middle School, Shawna Lyles. Our high school sponsors from Waco High School, Dr. Sunny Wells, and from University High School, Mr. Clark Nelson. And our social studies content specialist, Dr. Robert Glinsky. I want to take just a second to introduce you to a special guest who is here with our Waco High School students being recognized tonight. Laura Erkins is one of the German exchange students visiting Waco High School this year. It's an exciting program that broadens our students' horizons, as well as welcoming German students to Waco. And we have one additional recognition that we would like to make this evening. This meeting will represent a transition for the superintendent's office and the Board. For the past five years, Sandra Gonzalez has done an incredible job of shepherding the superintendent's office, keeping the trains on schedule, serving the Board of Trustees, and we are incredibly grateful for that service and that work from January of 2013 to now. This evening, our Board President has a plaque as a token of our appreciation to present. The plaque reads, "Presented to Sandra Gonzalez in grateful appreciation of your exemplary service to the superintendent's office, January 3, 2013, to March 22, 2018." I know I speak for the Board, the administration, our campus staff, in saying thank you so much for the service that you have given to this district, and in particular, the unique role that you have played in this district for the past five years. Thank you. Mr. President, that concludes the special recognitions portion of this evening's meeting. Thank you.
We also found out we've got some students from, what, the Baylor School of Social Work here this evening observing, so welcome. Glad you're here. Next up on the agenda, audience for guests. Kristy, did anyone sign up?
No.
All right. We'll move on to the consent agenda. I've been asked by the administration to pull Items J and K. Is there anything else anyone wants pulled? Anything else anyone wants pulled from the consent agenda? No? Now I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Items J and K. Thank you, Ms. Sykes. There a second? Thank you, Mr. Manning. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda is adopted. We'll move on to discussion of possible action. Approve the order declaring unopposed District 2 Place 2 and at-large position Place 6, and those candidates elected to office. Dr. Nelson?
Yes, sir. We recommend approval as presented at our business support meeting. It basically clears our way for the upcoming election and to do what we need to do in terms of the office of elections with the state of Texas. Ms. Davis, you have anything to add to that?
Well, Ms. Cordwig's not here tonight, but this does declare Stephanie Cordwig and Mr. Pat Adkins elected to office as they were unopposed.
With that, I'll entertain a motion. We haven't moved? No? That's hired me. So moved would work. Or adopting the administration's recommendation.
I move we approve the administration's recommendation for the approval of the order canceling the elections.
Oh, did you move? Oh, I like Mr. Sykes' motion. Mr. Sykes' motion. All right. So is there a second? Thank you, Mr. De Beer. Any questions, comments, or discussion? Yeah. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, and I guess I abstained. Move on to Item 11, Reports and Discussions. First, the presentation of the monthly and quarterly financial reports. Ms. Davis, is there anything you wanted to add to what's in the packet?
No. Again, these are, do include the quarterly reports this month, and once again, we do have the monthly report for the Internal Services Fund, which, as I told you last month, we were, have started because of going self-insured. And then, the quarterly reports include the Athletic Complex Statement, the Tax Collection Report, Cash Investments Report, and Cash Flow Projections. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right. Any questions from the Board regarding the financial reports? No? All right. Thank you, Ms. Davis. It is 7:31, and we'll move on to the Lone Star Governance Continuous Improvement Report this evening for mathematics student performance. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to call up at this time our two mathematics content specialists. For secondary, we have Mrs. Sarah Scott, and representing our elementary math program, we have Mrs. Ebony Cousins. You have in your packet a copy of the presentation that will guide their information. I show elementary being first, so I think I'll...
...have an overview of math in general.
Absolutely. So I'll introduce Ms. Scott to give an overview of math in general, and then you'll introduce Ms. Cousins when you're ready. All right. Ms. Scott?
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Dr. Nelson.
Good evening.
We're here to discuss math, so everybody's favorite subject. So, my name is Sarah Scott. As you mentioned, I am the secondary content specialist, so I'm 6 through 12. And this is Ebony Cousins.
I'm the K-5 math.
So I started in Waco ISD 10 years ago, and taught at University High School as a math teacher. I did leave a year and go to West, and then I came back as the content specialist for just high schools. And then, this is my fourth year for 6 through 12.
I came to Texas in 2004 from Mississippi and joined the staff at Midway ISD, where I stayed for 11 years, and then joined the Waco ISD team as K-5 content specialist.
So, we wanted to talk a little bit about... It's under my paper. We're moving on. Okay. So we did want to talk a little bit about the effective math classroom, and we're going to kind of do this one together because it's consistent. We would like to see it consistent from K-12. So, things that we look for when we go into a math classroom, and we know that the teacher is being effective, first and foremost is our standards-based instruction. They are studying the TEACs. They are guided by those TEACs. They are asking students to do what those student expectations are. You'll also see scaffolded lessons, differentiation, and learner-centered activities.
I think in implementing the Super Seven, we're really trying to engage students in the instruction and implementation of the district-wide resources that we have available. Also, increase communication among students and teacher and students, and also support the implementation of the Super Seven, again, through quality planning and holding high expectations for all stakeholders.
So it's kind of interesting. We had a discussion with Dr. Nelson this morning in one of our meetings about the Super Seven, and we talked about how it's just kind of old-school planning. It is built for teachers to plan thoroughly and have great lessons ready for their students. And so, when we talk a little bit about that Super Seven, it kind of leads us into the secondary-wise PLC framework. So I wanted to talk a little bit about that first. So I have a copy of it for you. So, we've had PLCs for a while, off and on. We had it when I was in the classroom for a little while, then they went away, and now they're back. So, to get the biggest bang for our book, we've got to have an effective use of the PLC. That means that teachers are planning. Teachers are looking at data, student data, and looking at student work. So looking at student data and looking at student work really drives what needs to be going on in class, because if we're not looking at those things, then we're teaching to what we don't know. And so, at the secondary level, because we do have PLCs, 6 through 8 every day, and our testables at the high school level, we decided there really needed to be a framework to make those most effective. So, we put into place the three things that we think teachers need to be doing, which is that planning. And we have guidance through that planning, including that Super Seven, ways to step through that backwards planning, planning unit tests before laying out the units, so that we are teaching what we need to be teaching. So, I know I was guilty of it in the classroom sometimes, where I looked at the pacing, went, oh, okay, linear functions. I got this. I know what it is. I'm going to teach it, and then I'm going to test the kids on it. It might not have been everything that linear functions needed to include, so we really talk about studying those TEACs, laying those out, then writing our Align Test, then laying out the unit and the lessons to align with that. So we've seen some really great things coming from this PLC framework, a lot more structure in a lot of the PLCs. Now, it still needs work, just like any other plan. We need to continue to hold it accountable. We need to continue to be in there working with those teachers. But that PLC framework, so far in that secondary level, is doing a great job.
At this point, we will discuss primarily elementary math. Before, we're going to look at the initiatives to support effective classrooms. So Sarah and I talked to you about what we're, what we look for in the classroom, but now we're going to talk about how we support those things as well. I, let's see, forward. There we go. So, I've been in this position, this is year four, and first year, I was solo. There was no other person other than Sarah Manning Secondary. But we've been fortunate to add instructional coaching support at the elementary levels. I'd like for Ms. Amanda McClellan to stand. Ms. McClellan is the K-5 instructional coach. Also, Audrey Long. Audrey and Alicia Oliver are provided to us through the Office of Professional Development, so they are instructional coaches, which means they wear dual hats, helping support reading and math. Amanda supports Alta Vista, Brook Avenue, Crestview, JH Hans, and Providence Heights. Audrey Long supports Parkdale and JH Hans. Alicia Oliver is at Kendrick and Dean Highland. So these ladies really are an irreplaceable part of the math team. They help support the teachers by modeling, co-teaching, planning, and really being support for them as they try to implement the Super Seven and have effective math classrooms. So thank you, ladies. So Sarah talked to you a little bit about needing a framework. So the standards changed in math a few years back, and things got shifted from grade levels. So, some things in 4th grade, actually, we don't teach anymore. They went to 8th grade. They took some 8th grade standards, sprinkled them into 5th grade. So that the standards that we were accustomed to really changed. And so, because of that, we needed to make sure when we were planning that we understood the standards that we needed to present to the students. So we adopted and started developing TEAC diagrams, which is just a fancy way of saying we're looking at all parts of the student expectation, especially the verb, which is the action that you should see in the classroom, and the stuff, how you're doing the verb. And so, we use those TEAC diagrams during the PLC, during planning, to make sure we are covering what I call the comma, comma, comma. I will multiply in multiple ways, divide using tables, just making sure that we're not teaching just the part of the standards that we're familiar or comfortable with. Also, we provide lead-forward support, wonderful resource that helps engage students around instructional strategies and planning assessments and instructional exercises. So, we have a adopted curriculum that we provide at the district level in vision math, but there's no one perfect program. So, the ladies and I worked to support the teachers by providing a Google folder, which allows them access to supplemental activities to the core program. So maybe they need activities that are more rigorous, more engaging than what's presented in the textbook, so they have that as an option as well. This year, after Dr. Nelson rolled out the Super Seven, we knew that communication in the math classroom was important, so we, for K through 5, developed journaling prompts that the teacher can use daily to help increase writing in the classroom around mathematics, mathematic topics. We also did curriculum support, so that was an opportunity for teachers to come and to study the standards and to plan their lessons, and to have a second set of eyes make sure that they're on target. And then, of course, the instructional specialists wanted to make sure that they were holding their teachers accountable, so they asked for One Page Wonders, which were a snapshot of what the district guidelines and expectations are around the Super Seven. Do you guys have this? I can get, I have a copy.
The elementary campus data?
Yes.
Okay, you do, okay.
We don't have any of the PowerPoint.
So this kind of shows, this chart shows where we are as far as 3, 4, 5 testing. You will notice that the state, as we are performing against the state, we are closing the gap, but slowly. In 2016, the district had 55% of students passing standards. The state had 75. In 2017, that moved to 60% for the district and 78% for the state. So, when I did the math, that was about a 2% gain. 4th grade, you have 73% in 2016 at the state, 54% at the district level, 57% at the district level in 2017, and state was 76%. 5th grade, state was 86, and district was 73%. And in 2017, you had 73% and 87%. I'll talk in a second about the difference between administration from 16 to 17. We'll look closely at the IR campuses. So, I'll go back to this slide. In 2016, the tests were longer. 3rd grade had 46 items, 4th, 48 items, and 5th had 50 items. The state shortened the test by 14 questions, bringing it in to 32, 34, and 36 items. So, this slide shows the IR campuses, Alta Vista's performance in 2017 versus 2016. Approaches to pass this test, they needed 50%. The blueprint, like I said, was from 46 to 32 questions, but with that change, with the shorter test, they actually needed in 3rd grade six more items to pass because the test got shorter. For Brook Avenue, they showed growth from 2016 to 2017. from 2016 to 2017, as well as Crestview and JH Hans. JH Hans has a good bit of manpower with it. This year, we started the Parent Academies, or the Homework Academies, Homework Nights, where we invited the parents to school during the school day. And Audrey, bilingual, Alicia, and Amanda and I worked with parents on instructional strategies to support math in the classroom. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just, I'm confused. You've got, on the chart for Crestview, you show the difference between 16 and 17. But, on the data sheet that we have, Crestview is even for 16, 17. But, I don't know if I'm looking at the same thing.
That's third, so this is, okay, this is 3rd grade. And on the data sheet, it says 40 to 61%.
I see. CR is Cedar Ridge. Got it.
So, for 5th grade, 2000, this is the 2016 versus 2017 in gold. We recently administered, I can't tell what color that is, maybe brown, we'll call it brown. The third measure is the last released. We gave the 5th graders this year, a couple of weeks ago, in February, the 2017 test. So, in 5th grade, at this point, the curriculum has been covered for the year, and they have about three weeks to a month to prepare for the test. So, we start with the 2017 release test, and this is how we performed. Let's see if I have the specific numbers. Sorry. Alta Vista was at 38%, Brook Avenue 40%, Crestview 55%, and Hans 68%. And those are our current 5th grade students. For 5th grade this year, they needed nine more questions. We went from 50 questions to 36. They needed nine more questions to pass with the 48, 47%. So, what do we do about all this? So, one thing, when I analyzed the data, it was clear that the kids did well on the topics that we taught in January, February, March. When you look specifically at the data, they did more on the things that we taught first semester, August, September. And so, we worked over the summer to rewrite our pacing guides, to increase the specificity. So, when you get a textbook, every lesson is not needed. And some lessons are missing. So, we actually went through every lesson in the 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, adopted material, and identified for teachers the essential lessons that are non-negotiable. We then provided resources through the Google folder for more rigorous activities when maybe the textbook didn't get the job covered. So, for instructional pacing, we did a layout for the teachers that told them how many days to spend on multiplication, when to assess multiplication, what vocabulary words were important, and then here are misconceptions that kids might have. So, really trying to build the background of the teachers so they're not having to do so much legwork. Now, for those standards that were low performing, we went in the summer and wrote spiral reviews for grades 1 through 5, starting Week 2 of the school year. So, Week 2, we looked at, what did we teach in Week 1? Here are the essential questions that kids can't forget from Week 1, and we typed them. We moved to Week 3, we looked back at Week 2. What are the essentials that the kids cannot lose in Week 2, and we drafted those questions. And so, we did that for the entire school year, so that that's an opportunity for teachers to keep those skills warm that we were performing low on, because we taught them, one of the reasons being that we taught them so early in the year. One that comes to mind always is place value. We typically start with place value in 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade, and then by the end of the year, we've got to make sure that we're keeping those skills warm. So, we talked, we talked about written communication and supporting the Super Seven. We did make journaling questions for every lesson that they taught, for each day. They had a way to introduce the, introduce the lesson or to close the lesson through writing and responding. So, when we looked at, when we look at 2nd grade data, it's typically looking firm, okay? But, there's a huge jump between 2nd grade and 3rd grade, expectations and teaching and learning. So, our data didn't transfer to 3rd grade to be as great as we thought it was. So, what we did to respond to that is we, this year, made 2nd grade tests more rigorous, looking at how we're formatting it. It looks more like star. And we did start doing some multiple choice questions with them, with 3, with an ABC versus an ABCD. And one thing to say is, we do continue to offer the reading support in math, because our kids struggle with reading. The test at 2nd grade is read to the student, either in a group setting or a whole group setting, so that we get a measure on the math versus the reading hindering the math. So, that's been something that we've been on the fence about. But, we just can't, at this point, say that they're reading well enough in 2nd grade, at the end of the 2nd grade year, to do the reading and the math. One thing that Sarah and I communicate about all the time is how my 5th graders are transferring over for her 6th, as 6th graders. And one thing that continues to pop up is fluency and automaticity of facts. So, this year, we have, we're piloting a program at Cedar Ridge. Cedar Ridge has two very top-notch instructional specialists that are rolling out a fact fluency program that's old-school pencil paper, teach you the strategy and measure your ability to use that strategy and gain fluency and automaticity. We are, we are hoping to adopt a program that we can do district-wide that will help students with their numerical fluency. Lastly, we wanted to talk about parental support of math at home, and that just goes back to those homework, homework nights that started with Kathleen Rooney in the bilingual department. We did that at Hans, at Parkdale. Crestview's done it, and it's really been successful because the parents walk away with instructional strategies and activities that they can do at home. So, we don't just tell them what to do with their kids. We're actually providing the resource, whether it's dice, or multiplication cards, or, you know, things that they can take home and use. We started out at JH Hans, and we were doing it during the school day. That did not align with parents' ability to get to school, because most of them were at work. So, we moved it to their evening sessions and tied it to their music programs and open house night, parent nights. And so, one of the rotations that they had to go through was to go learn about what your child's learning about in math, do some hands-on activities with the student, with the child, and then take the material home to practice. And so, that was fun for, and effective for the student and both the parent to be engaging in math together. And that was led by the instructional coaches, myself and Kathleen Rooney in the bilingual department. So, moving forward, we are collectively working to just grow our content knowledge. We've got to use our instructional specialist on the campus as instructional leaders. And so, we will have an instructional specialist bootcamp June 5th, 6th, and 7th tentatively, where we will work on coaching, instructional coaching, and content knowledge. So, the instructional specialists are used in different roles. But, we recognize that in order for them to best help teachers, to best help students, we must increase their, their content knowledge. One thing that has been a struggle is fidelity to an instructional model. So, what does that mean? We adopted a resource in Vision Math, and it is being utilized consistently throughout the district for the most part. However, it is not being used correctly. We're fighting an uphill battle with, because of the differentiation piece. It's a program that allows kids to be in flexible groups on a daily basis that meet their needs. We see, we often see the traditional approach of the teacher does the whole group, and then lesson, questions 1 through 30 are independent work. So, we are constantly just reminding and offering training on how to use the resource most effectively. And so, that would be through differentiation, so that kids are getting what they, what they need. And then again, fluency and problem solving. When we look up, talk about where we're headed for Super Seven support, we're really going to be focusing on, again this year, intentional planning and questioning. We talked earlier this morning with Dr. Nelson about a lesson plan template, and including and incorporating the Super Seven to make sure that they are, that we're all intentional about what those things and components are and will be in each day's lesson. I'm so envious, I often say, of the PLC structure at the high school secondary level. They have expectations, they have a framework, and that's something that we are going to work on for the elementary grade levels, so that we can have a consistent plan for planning and begin to look at student work in light of the planning and the assessments. So, the last thing is just continuing to invest in teachers as content experts through curriculum support and just doing math. Coming together in the afternoon or during the school day around the mathematics that the, that the kids have to be able to do. Developing our district staff as coaches and as the content specialist, and then have teachers as leaders. I'd love to see a cohort of teachers that commit to doing math and working with math with the district-level personnel, and then going out and spreading that and sharing it as teacher leaders. At this point, I think we're going to open it up. Do you want to do questions now, or at the end?
Yes, first of all, I want to give a thumbs up to JH Hans. They are really rocking over there. And Mrs. St. Paul, congratulations. But, one of the questions I do have is, on the sheet you gave us here, Alta Vista, from the 3rd grade to the 4th grade.
Dropped 20%.
Right. Is there, I mean, you know, can y'all figure out what that reason behind that was?
So, that was a situation where we had a first-year teacher, and she was hardworking. And we paired her with, identified that the kids were struggling, making connections and growing. Ms. Amanda paired up with her and worked with her throughout the year. But, it was a situation where it was just first-year teacher. The kids came in a little behind, and so, it took awhile to catch, to try to develop that classroom, develop her as a teacher, make the relationship with the kids, and get the, the work done.
Then, I know years ago, I mean, we always used to talk about the fact that Waco ISD has a high mobility rate. Is this being consistent? If a kid is at Alta Vista, end up going to Hans, I mean, they're not going to be losing anything? Even if they went from, say, the 3rd grade, Alta Vista went to the 4th grade of Hans, there should not be any lack?
Right. So, when we paced out the instruction, when we found that the kids were doing, not consistently performing on things in different areas of the year, the teachers throughout the district are within a week of each other. So, there may be certain circumstances where maybe I'm sick and out a couple of days, so I have a sub, and the kids get a couple of days behind. But, if it's anything more than a week, the principal usually calls and says, "Can you come over and help us come up with a plan to get back on track or catch up?" But, yes, they are teaching the same thing, same concept, using the same resource from campus to campus.
Okay, my last question. Can they go out in 1st grade, 3rd grade? They learn how to count marbles or something like that, I guess?
They're doing, so we are holding, we have the data from that, and I can provide it for you. But, they are being assessed just as frequently. Like I said, we increased the rigor at the 2nd grade, 2nd grade test so that we could get a better picture of our 3rd graders, 3rd graders entering from 2nd grade, but they're holding their own.
Okay. Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Other questions? Ms. Sykes?
Ms. Cousins?
Yes.
On the priority slide, and a slide ahead of that, there was an item under areas to address that was listed as low-performing standards. What are you describing there?
Okay, so, standard 3, 4B in 3rd grade is multiplication, basically algebra in the 3rd grade. We have consistently scored low on that, typically because it's taught later in the year after multiplication has been taught, because you need that multiplication and division relationship. And so, what we've done is increased the, the questions that I was talking about, that we wrote for review, the spiral review, so that when the teacher has to move on to the next topic, we're not stopping 3, 4B. We're still spinning that plate. Because a lot of times, we teach in isolation. The pacing guide or the curriculum document says time. So, for 4 days, I teach time. The next time it says money, I teach money. Well, if we're not intentionally continuing to teach time and money, then money, time goes cold. And so, that's what was, that's what was happening. And so, we're trying to be proactive and put something in place that keeps those skills warm as we move on.
So, your reference is repetitive, low-performing then?
Yes.
I was reacting to low-performing standards, I guess.
Okay. So, we're just trying to keep doing the standard over and over throughout the year versus teaching it in isolation.
I see, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Dr. Nelson, do you have something?
Well, I just wanted to thank Ms. Cousins. Ms. Scott has a secondary part of this presentation. I'd like her, and while she's, while she's coming up, I wanted to emphasize that in our conversations, really to respond to Mr. Sykes, you know, I'm not exactly, I think there's 13 math objectives? Is that right, 13 total?
Objectives.
Content objectives?
There are six.
And so, which one is, that's at elementary and secondary?
No, there's more.
So, my point is, is that, Mr. Sykes, is that when you really start digging into the data, you can disaggregate our data down to the objective that is the lowest. And so, you know, where do you start? Start at the one that's the lowest, you know? And that's, that's definitely part of our planning. But, we got to do a better job at this. I just want to be clear. I applaud all of our work and my conversations with our content specialists and team today. You know, some of the things I was asking was, are we on the right track in terms of trying to differentiate instruction through this? You know, I keep hearing this term, our social work students keep hearing this term, Super Seven. And that is an instructional mindset. Ms. Scott says it well. It's really just asking teachers to walk into class with evidence that they've planned that lesson. So, you can't just walk in and say, "I'm going to teach linear equations." You have to really make sure you teach linear equations to what we call the student expectation level of the TEAK. And so, that scaffolds more rigorous and more rigorous all the way through those high-level maths. So, I just wanted to emphasize that we've got a long way to go. I applaud, this is not a chastise or anything. I know that everyone's working hard, our coaches and... But, reading and math is, all the work that we're talking about with transformation zones and things like that really comes down to our ability to improve reading and math. Thank you, Ms. Cousins. Ms. Scott?
Going to move on to... Maybe we're going to move on to... Okay, here we go. Okay, I've already introduced myself. I am Sarah Scott. I'm the secondary content specialist. But, I would like to take a second to recognize Julie Rush. She is my secondary instructional coach. And I am beyond thrilled to have her. She started with me last year, and she's invaluable. And so, I'll actually talk about her in just a minute. She started with me last year and she's invaluable and so I'll actually talk about her in just a minute. So, again, we talked, we led the beginning, uh, beginning of the presentation with what effective classrooms look like. So we wanted to talk a little bit about the initiatives at secondary that we have to support those effective classrooms. Teak trees. So Ebony mentioned teak diagrams. I called them teak trees when I first started them. So we build them to deconstruct the standards. So when we taught math standards a lot, there's multiple representations of everything. So when we talk linear functions, they have to be able to do linear functions from tables and they have to be able to do them from graphs. They have to be able to do them from verbal and word problems. So all the, as Ebony mentioned, commas, it helps us break those down and have the teachers make sure we cover all of those representations. Again, Lead Forward Support. Lead Forward, I think, is one of our best resources we have. There is so much information, so we really support that and we've incorporated that into our planning process. So when I talk the planning process, it's that backwards planning that we have set up in secondary math to really get the teachers studying the TEAKs, designing that aligned test and then doing the units. And Lead Forward has tons of support for scaffolding, what that vertical alignment looks like. What did they come in with? What do I need to make sure they know before we do on grade level? Has academic vocabulary. And one of the best resources it has is an instructional strategies playbook, if you will, that gives teachers ways to teach the content that's engaging for students. Anywhere from a snowball fight to a beach ball. And so they'll work a problem and they'll wad it up and they'll throw it and the next person takes it and says, works it, see if they get the same problem. And so it's a lot of interaction. We also do have Google folders. I take great pride in our Google folders and I can't see, tell if you can see that. That's kind of a snapshot of one of our sixth-grade Google folders. There are resources for every single unit. It has pacing guides, it has academic resources for that vocabulary. Our pacing guides are in there, it has testing information. Julie does a fabulous job of anything that we're seeing on campus that's really great, says, hey, can I use this for other teachers? And so we'll upload any good things that we're seeing in there and those are a constant living document that our teachers have access to. So when I resized this to fit my nifty picture, somehow my fourth bullet went away. But that is our instructional coach. So we got reading coaches and so Ebony and I went, hey, we would love some math coaches. And so we went, we asked for one, we got one. We started interviewing. It was a K-12 job. We interviewed some folks. That's a really hard position, number one, to find and number two, to be effective. So if somebody is spread over that many schools, they're not going to be able to be effective. We're going to have them spread too thin. So we had that discussion and actually ended up getting the two positions that we got. And Julie is irreplaceable at those schools and she's also irreplaceable to me as a professional. So she grows me. We have lots of conversations about what we need to do. We can bounce ideas off of each other. We can, you know, even argue a bit about differences of opinions. But she's a really great part to our team. Of course, advanced questioning. We provide a questioning rings for teachers to really help with, you know, it's, it's hard in the middle of a lesson to figure out what kind of questions you're going to ask. And so that's part of that planning and so we gave them some rings to be able to plan some of those questions into their lessons. I've mentioned several times, our planning process and our PLC framework, they go hand in hand. We backwards plan, we really take the time to study and in that PLC framework, part of that is student work analysis and data analysis. We also do curriculum support, pretty much like all the contents. The way we do that is we look at the upcoming units and we go and focus on the ones that have been struggles for teachers and learners. So we provide content there for that and that's kind of, that's a picture of the teachers doing one of the activities from curriculum support. Julie does a great job of designing a lot of those interactive lessons that we provide there. Then the teachers leave with the stuff to do it. And then, as Ebony mentioned, we developed the Super Seven quick guides to support teachers and instructional specialists. A couple of additional initiatives. So not all of my grade levels are what they call tested accountability levels. So these are a couple of additional levels. We can't leave those out. Those are the, the maths that are going to get us into college and going to get us ACT, SAT, TSI. So I work a lot with Dr. McClanahan on looking at the TSI, seeing where we're struggling. So what we did this year is actually developed a unit at the beginning of geometry for those students. A big struggle with TSI, I don't know if y'all know this, but the difference in the TSI for us is no calculator. So we give these kids a calculator in eighth grade, state mandate, one-to-one calculator. Same thing in Algebra One. We continue through, do that in calculus as well. And then the TSI, they do not have a calculator. Now on some of the questions, it might pop up a little four-function calculator. Every once in a while, it'll pop up a graphing calculator depending on the question, but they do not get the calculator that they actually use. And so we're really trying to focus on helping the students be able to do things without the calculator to help with the TSI. Our AP, we have AP calculus and we have AP statistics. When I came into the, this position, that was an area that we desperately needed to grow in. And so we actually got a mentor for our AP instructors. The first couple of years, it was just calculus. My mentee, actually, when I taught at university, became a fabulous calculus teacher. So I called on her and she mentored our teachers at both locations, University High School and Waco High. What's really great now is that Ms. Lehman at University High School is now our mentor for the Waco High teachers. So we have newer teachers to those contents at Waco High. And so it's really nice to have grown one of our own who's producing and is able to mentor those teachers and she actually works with them every other week. I do district tests, geometry, Algebra Two and pre-calc as well. It's not very often this year with our condensed district calendar, uh, testing calendar. I've done it once in fall and once in spring. But you know, I was always that accountability teacher. When it was tax, I was the geometry teacher. When it became STAR, I was the Algebra One teacher. So there's a lot of weight and stress put on those accountability teachers. And if we're not holding the others accountable, then we're not growing our students with where they need to go for college either. Some of them like it, some of them don't, but I feel very strongly about continuing to do that. We have an IS collaboration and I'll actually get to that when we talk about data. We also put in place an Algebra One placement test and a seventh-grade pre-AP pacing guide that's completely separate than the regular seventh-grade test, or pacing guide. And I'll visit about that when we looked at data in a minute as well. Our last one, and Ebony alluded to this one a little bit, is our instructional specialist boot camp. So we talk a lot about growing teachers, but we have got to grow our instructional specialists as well. They're our instructional leaders on campus. They are working with those teachers daily and we've got to feel confident with those folks interacting with our teachers and planning correctly with our teachers all the time. So we've really been working on growing them as well. Okay. So let's look at a little data. That's what we love to do in math. So I can get lost in the data and I often do. So we are closing the gap in secondary math and I'm very proud of that. Obviously, the state went up four between sixteen and seventeen, a percent difference, and we as a district went up seven. You can see Cesar Chavez and Lake Air took huge jumps. Cesar Chavez had a really strong leader on that team who was really good about thinking outside of the box and implemented centers for the team and it went over really well. Lake Air, that instructional specialist and those teachers, really deep into that data and really individualized for those students that they have. And so that makes a huge difference. We did talk a little bit about, we have the new TEAKs. So this is actually the only two years of data that we have for the new TEAKs tests. The first year, they told us we were going to have an overlapping test and right before it, they went, sorry, we actually don't have enough overlapping content to do an overlapping test. So we're going to give you a new, new TEAKs test, but we're just not going to count it. So that's why we only have two years of new TEAK stuff. Also Ebony talked about how we have lots of conversations about fifth to sixth grade. So here's an example. In fifth grade, students never see a negative number according to the curriculum. In sixth grade, they are expected to be fluent with integers. And what we mean by that is do all operations of integers, positive and negative numbers. And that's a very difficult concept for our students. We work with manipulatives and try to build that. So what Ebony and I did was we created an end-of-the-year guide for the fifth graders to introduce negatives, introduce counters, and so that at least they've seen it when they get to sixth grade. Seventh grade increased by nine. And so we closed the gap by eight with the state. We obviously still have a long way to go, don't get me wrong, but that was a hard-earned number there. Especially Carver and Indian Springs. So those are kind of some of the lower numbers. But we had new teachers to the content there and Julie spent so much time there helping those teachers and I think we would have been in not as good shape if she was not there, co-teaching, model teaching, planning with those teachers to support them. So we were happy with that growth there. Eighth grade, so we closed the gap there by four. We are getting closer to the sta- uh, state in eighth grade. And so calculator, you'll hear me talk a little bit about calculator. And that is a new tool for eighth grade when those new TEAKs came in because so much algebra came down. Because so much algebra came down, they decided to allow the eighth graders the access to the calculator. My ISs and eighth-grade teachers have heard me kind of go on little rants about the calculator probably this year because it's a fine line between using it as a tool and showing them tricks where we're not teaching them the math concepts. Our TI inspires do quite a bit of the math and we see an issue when we're going into high school if we're teaching a lot of tricks in the eighth grade. So we've had lots of conversations about how to use the calculator to help with the math understanding and not to teach tricks.
Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Does the middle school scores at Tennessean include ATLAS?
They do. Yes.
So at sixth grade, we had a one-point drop and it includes ATLAS?
Yes.
Thank you.
I did want to talk a little bit about eighth grade because we do have current data for eighth grade. We just took a DBA right before spring break. So I'm pretty happy with that eighth grade. Now this one is a seventeen to seventeen. That's not a typo. I wanted to talk about our intensive instruction growth. So this was last year's DBA numbers in gray. And after our three-week focused intervention, those are the STAR scores we got. Now I'm not going to say that was just because of that IS collaboration and that intervention. The IS at Carver pulled kids and was working one-on-one with kids. Cesar Chavez actually absorbed some of the classes from one teacher into a couple of other teachers. Indian Spring, they did the focused instruction in three days and with the help of Julie and the IS there, they broke groups up into instruction and individual groups there. So the focused instruction is showing good growth. The, the teachers are using it. And so if we continue to see growth like that between the two, these were our DBA numbers last year versus this year. So we're already sitting at a much better spot this year. This was the released STAR test from last year. So Carver is already surpassed what they did last year on STAR to what they took this year. So again, if we see that same growth, I'm very optimistic on what we're going to see in eighth grade. All right. And my last testable is Algebra One. We saw a huge jump in algebra. So we closed the gap by nine, so we are within single-digit difference of the state in algebra. Last year was our first year that we had a new TEAKs test. So high school new TEAKs actually came in a year after the middle school. Our sixteen test was an overlap test. So that was any TEAKs that were old and new and they gave us that test. Seventeen was a completely new TEAKs test. And so to see that growth with our new TEAKs, I was very proud of that. I do think that having the new TEAKs really made the teachers study them and that had a lot to do with some of the growth. Waco High got a new IS. We have a math IS. I was very excited. Mr. Love calls her, Gigi, go get her. She's amazing. Anything you tell her, she, she takes it and runs with it. University has a very, very strong team that plans really well together, spirals standards in really well. And then Brazis got a new teacher over there that pulls tutorials as well as doing the credit recovery. So there are a lot of pieces in place for that. This is also where I'll mention that those two years are the two years that we've had the algebra placement test in place. So before this, schools ranged anywhere from eighty-one percent pass rates on that algebra in eighth grade to a couple of the schools that did still have a hundred. But now we're, got the kids in where they need to be and we're seeing results from that. So based on our data, we have instructional priorities for this year we've been working on. Utilization of district-provided resources. We have the Google folders we've talked about. We did Pearson training, that is our curriculum that we have provided. PLC curriculum support. We really want the teachers to start there first. So when you're planning a unit, start with these resources. We know they're aligned, we know they're good, so utilize them. Teacher-aligned planning, I've mentioned several times about that backwards planning. We're just going to keep on moving with that. Last year for us, seventh grade was kind of a focus because from sixth, seventh and eighth, seventh is probably the hardest content, in my opinion. It is eighth-grade stuff, really, that kids have to do without the calculators, multi-step problems that they have to do. This year, sixth grade is. We've been doing fairly well district data-wise and then I'm a little disappointed when we get our STAR results because they're not quite where I thought they would be based on district. And so I've upped the rigor of those tests and we've been focusing on those skills and numeracy. Adjustment of lessons, we talked about this. Student work analysis and the data analysis. If we don't know what students can and cannot do, then we are not teaching them what they need. So if we are looking at that stuff in PLC, we need to make adjustments as we go within those lessons. And then you kind of already got a small version of my calculator talk and so we're really still working there with the calculators. Moving forward, we need to give the teachers more and more content. We're still new to the TEAKs. They still kind of want to revert back to those old ones if they've been teaching for a while. So we continue to work with the content with the teachers. I would like to work with those geometry teachers on the TSI, have them take that TSI test and understand what the kids are expected to do, continue working with that PLC framework. Student work analysis, so I'm going to kind of put those together, is our newest piece of that framework. And we, we need to continue working with that, putting some better protocols in place so that people feel comfortable with that. And then again, instructional specialists, growing those instructional specialists. They're the ones that meet day-to-day with those teachers, so when we're not there, we need to feel comfortable with that.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Any comments or questions, Mr. President?
Any questions from the board? All right, thank you. We'll move on to announcements. Mr. DeBeere?
While Mr. DeBeere is coming forward, I did want to be sure and recognize Mrs. Stephanie Quarterwig will celebrate a birthday this Saturday. So she's not here today, but we wanted to be sure and wish her a happy birthday.
For the record, the Lone Star Governance piece ended at eight twenty-five.
Yes.
All right, Mr. DeBeere?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Nelson, I wanna begin by thanking everyone who helped to make the 12th Annual HEB Celebrity Cookoff last Friday such an incredible success. Uh, in its 12th year, the event reached a milestone of raising $1 million just through the cookoffs for the Waco ISD Education Foundation. Um, and in addition to thanking all of the foundation board and volunteers in particular, I'd like to thank some folks who led the event, uh, from Baylor University, Bruce Geetzen, from HEB, Bill Davenport, and the exceptional executive director for the foundation, Laura Robertson.
I also wanted to be sure and thank, uh, our good teammates and friends at Sodexo. Uh, the pig out on the table was one of the hits of it and the ribs were excellent and the greens, collared greens, uh, collared, excuse me, collared green. Um, so I just wanted to thank y'all personally. You made us proud and we won an award. I can't remember which one it was, but a lot of time and effort and I wanted to thank, uh, the team over there for their outstanding representation of my booth.
And just three things I'd like to highlight between now and the next, uh, board meeting. We have coming up on Saturday, the Waco ISG, ISD Job Fair at University High School. Uh, we're excited to meet people who wanna become part of the Waco ISD family. On the 27th, Waco High School takes on University High School in softball with the first pitch for varsity at 7:00 PM. And April 5th through the 7th, we have a huge contingent of kids headed to Corpus Christi to compete in the State Skills USA Conference and I'm looking forward to introducing you to those state qualifiers at a future board meeting.
Also, we're real proud to announce that on April 8th, Ladainian Tomlinson will be having a, um, combine-type camp at our Waco ISD stadium. Uh, we'll be putting out information on our website, but, uh, this is the beginning of, um, lots of renewed relationships with our WISD graduate and 2017 Hall of Fame inductee, uh, Ladainian Tomlinson, and we're looking forward to, uh, that relationship.
Other announcements from the dais? Uh, I've got two. Ms. Manny, go ahead.
Uh, 10:30 St. Luke AME, 10:30 Sunday morning. And Ms. Scott, or? Well, Mr. Dupree and I said, y'all teach them how to use the slide rule, they're gonna be have to use the calculator.
For those of you who work in this building, uh, today was a very special day for my dear friend Jesse Botelho and the whole Botelho family. I'm not gonna give it away, but if you cross, come across him in the hallway this week, just say congratulations and, and I'll let him tell you exactly what happened, but it was a big day for that whole family. Uh, secondly, a little birdie just told me that, uh, Sunday is Dr. Nelson's birthday. Uh, I don't have Dr., uh, Mr. Pettis here to, to serenade you, but, uh, and I'm not gonna ask anybody else up here to sing, so, uh, but, but happy birthday from, from the board.
Thank you very much.
Uh, anything else from the dais? Hearing no objections. 8:30, we'll stand adjourned.